Evening. A call to order, the regular meeting of April 13th, 2016. Our first item of business, roll call. Kim, Mrs. Burns will be here shortly. Thank you. Could you join us, please, for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item of business will be the approval of items by consensus. There are seven items for consideration on the consent agenda tonight. And we'll take, first of all, the out-of-state field trip. We'll do that separately. And this one is to Montreal, Canada. Did you want to speak on that one? No. Okay, everybody go ahead. I saw that. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Montreal, Canada, May 26, 2017. This is next year, not this year. Mrs. Bonnich?
Second.
Mrs. Carroll?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. The other items would be the approval of the minutes of March 23rd, 2016 regular session, warrant G 419, warrant R 219, warrant 138. Could we have a motion to accept those? Mrs. Carroll, so move? Second. Mr. Bjork. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Payroll warrant for 3/30, 2016. Mrs. Bonnich?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Mullis? I see you moving. No, thank you. All those in favor? Oh, abstention. Wait, sorry, start again. All those in favor? Thank you. One, two, three, four in favor, and two abstained, Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Carroll. And our last one would be the warrants for the food services, FS 22, 23, and 24. Who would move for those?
I'll move up.
Mr. Bjork, second. Mrs. Brusad. All those in favor? Okay. Five in favor, and one abstained, Mrs. Carroll. All right. I did that. Thank you. I did the regular ones. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Good to see you. We just wondered if we hadn't mentioned you.
Yeah. It's six o'clock. I was rushing to get here.
Thank you.
Well, starting off, beautiful spring day. Finally, we don't have to shut the shades because, you know, like, it's sunny. It's awesome. I want to start by saying that last week, April 8th, junior prom took place. That was amazing. I saw all the pictures on social media, and I was like, that's going to be me next year. And then, next month, May 13th, is senior prom. So back-to-back proms. That's pretty cool. But everybody is, you know, going through our prama, as we say, prom drama, which is, I mean, everybody faces that. Yeah. And that was not a student, actually. Mr. L., our music teacher, told us prama, so we used that little word. And also, recently, our assistant principal, Mr. Mahoney, was offered a principal position in Winchester High School. And that was just amazing to hear that. Oh, my God, he's, you have an opportunity to become a principal. And I was on one of the, like, student boards, yeah, to talk to the Winchester committee about, you know, how is he being a principal and everything. And luckily, I found out on Monday that he did get the job. And I just want to congratulate him on that because, you know, he does deserve it. And, you know, Winchester is amazing just to have him there. And I'm grateful that I had him as an assistant principal for these two years. And also, yesterday, Wilmington High School had a fundraiser for Bernie McNally, I can say, who is obviously battling terminal brain cancer. And what we, what our fundraiser was, you could wear a hat in school if you donated a dollar. So, you know, we kind of, kind of broke the rules. Oh, we didn't really break the rules, but we got to wear a hat and support him by donating $1 or even more if you wanted to. There was no money limit. And that was just an amazing way to get the entire school to, you know, participate and wear your hats because, obviously, you're, you're, you know, shamed upon if you wear your hats, but now you can for a good cause. And that was yesterday. And also, over next week is obviously April vacation, and the Costa Rica trip will take place. And that's, I've heard, you know, I told you about fundraisers that have taken place for. They had fundraisers at Barnes &amp; Nobles. They had hot chocolate and granola bars being sold every Friday to fundraise it. And it's just amazing. And I was talking to Ms. Pietro about it, who is one of the advisors for it. Yesterday, she's like, yeah, I have to come, like, my flight is 3:45 a.m., and I have to rush up everything. It was just like, 3:45 a.m.? And she's like, yep. But, you know, I heard about what things they're doing on the Costa Rica trip, and it's just amazing. And it's very culturally experienced, it's like very good culture, cultural experience for them. And then, after break, the environmental club is planning to do an Earth Day project by doing a raffle. And you can, the money that we get from the raffle, we use towards the environmental club to get our garden started that we're thinking about doing, and also enforcing more recycling in the school. And you can get a bonus raffle if we can see you recycle in front of us, which is, you know, a little bit, you know, you're killing two birds with one stone. You're recycling, and you're getting a free raffle. And it promotes the importance of Earth Day. People usually overlook Earth Day. They're like, yeah, it's Earth Day. It comes, you know, usually during April vacation. But really, there's some points about it of how we need to deal with our earth's, you know, health, really. You think of earth as a person, and earth has a skin and has a disease, and that's called mankind, kind of, if you think about it. And if we can, you know, take away the bad things that we do, you know, pollution and stuff, and we just replace it by doing one small step, by putting, like, a plastic bottle in a recycling bin, that will just make it such a big step forward in the future. And ending my report, I have a quote by John Muir, saying, "When one tugs at a simple thing in nature, he finds it attached to the rest of the world."
That is nice. Very good. Any comments or questions?
Outstanding as usual.
Thank you.
That was, yeah. It's so delightful to start our meetings with you every week. So we thank you very much, Deana. You put a lot of effort into it, and it shows. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to give a brief update that last weekend, so from Friday, late Friday through Monday, I was joined by six of our administrators in Atlanta at the annual conference of the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. It's thousands of educators come from around the country and around the world. We had the privilege of being able to attend that conference. It was myself, as well as Mrs. Ibelito, Mrs. King, Ms. McMiniman, Mrs. Mahon, Ms. Phillips, and Mr. Strasnick all attended as well. And I think one of the most moving parts of it was probably some of the keynote addresses that we heard. One of them was a gentleman named Manny Scott, who is actually the story of Freedom Writers, is based on, in part, on his story. Very emotional, compelling testament to why the work we do as educators is so important to students. And we also got to hear Carol Dweck, who is the author of the book Mindset, a couple of books on mindset, which was the topic of my blog, and that was also really informative, as well as a number of different breakout sessions that we were able to attend. So we had a really great trip. Also, in keeping with the theme of professional development, on Friday, Reading Public Schools annually, for about the last six or seven years, has hosted a full-day educator-sharing conference known as the Blue Ribbon Institute. And we actually have two teams from Wilmington Public Schools that will be presenting at that institute. So we will get to take advantage of the PD as well by virtue of that. But we have a team from the West Intermediate who are presenting on collaborative and proactive solutions and the pilot they've done this year. And also, Doreen Crowe and Kelly LaRoche will be presenting on the administration of the expert screening tool and how that's a proactive strategy for dealing with substance abuse prevention. So thank them for being able to, being willing to participate. Today, as you know, at Wilmington High School, we did have a planned K-9 search of the building. And as we communicated out, we, there were no alerts at the building, so we certainly are thankful for that. And it was, we just wanted to thank the Middlesex Sheriff's Office, as well as Wilmington Police Department and neighboring police departments that came as far as Danvers and beyond to assist with their K-9 units. And finally, just some upcoming dates. As you know, April school vacation is coming up, and I think we're all looking forward to that for sure. The National Honor Society will do their induction on April 28th at 7:00 p.m. And our annual town meeting is on April 30th. And way out, just to keep in the back of your mind, is graduation on Sunday, June 5th at 2:00 p.m. It seems way out, but it'll be here before you know it. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you. Our next item of business is old business, which, of which there is none. New business? Oh, look at this. Recognize Kathleen Carroll. As we all know, one of our mates is leaving us. And we just want to... I just want to see, would anybody like to give a few words before I do? No, they're all looking like...
You know me, I'm never a loss for words. I just, Kathleen, I just wanted to thank you for your time and energy and your volunteer ism to put your efforts into everything that encompasses school committee. I greatly appreciated your support, your input, your perspectives, and, you know, just discussion in making our district stronger in conjunction with the rest of our colleagues. I just wanted to say thank you.
All right. I just want to say that I went to the library and I looked through the annual reports for, since 2010, when you were here, to see the different things that had happened in the school system and what you have been part of happening. And I left it at home. So I have to thank you now. But we had, of course, the new high school, everything that went with that. You've been very much involved with the WEF and that program. You've been very much involved with the nursing, the health program. And what I want to say personally is, I people, I don't think people realize what a commitment it is. And frequently, we say to ourselves, this is a volunteer job. And they mentioned it at the selectmen's meeting the other night, that people think we get paid for this, and we don't get paid for this. And we all have children or grandchildren, and sometimes you have to make a choice between coming here or taking something that your grandchildren or your children are doing. And Kathleen has always come here, always. And she has wonderful family. And the times that you've given up in your family to be with us and to do school committee responsibilities has been really gratifying. And it's just, I just so admire you as a mother, as a school committee member. The other thing is, we don't all think alike, as you can tell sometimes. And that's wonderful. Sometimes it's better to have different thoughts, but Kathleen and I, in some of the electronic devices, she's my ally. We were thinking alike. But it's been really pleasant and excellent to work with you, and we're very happy to have had the time to get to know you. And we're still going to be in touch afterwards, definitely.
Thank you.
So I want to... Here's one thing for you. We, I brought this so you can put these back in here afterwards.
You could.
But we have an official plaque for you. It's got a lot written on it.
I know.
All right. Presented to Kathleen Carroll in honor of the dedicated commitment to the students of the Wilmington Public Schools. And I'm going to add that right here. Absolutely, every time Kathleen, you talk about the kids, this is for the kids, we have to think of it from the point of view of how it's going to affect the kids. And you're one of the most outspoken with saying that, and it's really appreciated. For service on the Wilmington School Committee from 2010 to 2016. Can you believe that? Six years at date?
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry. Oh, and we have a... Did we lose it? Oh, we have MJ sign it.
No, I have a plaque.
And this is very special. Kathleen is a lifetime member of our athletic department. She gets to go to any athletic event.
And it comes in very handy. Yeah, in lemonade. Now I just don't have to lose it. What if I lose it? Do I get... Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I just want to say thank you all. Thank my family for letting me do this for the last six years. All my supporters, my friends, my committee. I can't wait to hear about all the other good things you guys are going to have down the line. And the staff to support me and to help me understand things that I couldn't. And that's it. Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
It has been, really. Thank you. This is the part that's hard. She can put those in there. Thank you. All right. Now we go from this to business. The middle school math pilot program.
Yes, and I'm going to call forward Mrs. Gerard, principal of the middle school. I think she's going to be joined by Sandy Dable, who's the math coach at the middle school, and Bill Manchester, who is our 612 math CTO here in Wilmington.
We're good? I can do it. Okay. Good evening. How are you all doing? I think when I arrived, gosh, what, six months ago at this point? Maybe a little longer? I've lost track. One of the priorities that was made abundantly clear to me, both by central office staff as well as our teachers, was we needed some support in math, whether that be resources, instructional supports, a wide array of things. So what I had decided to do is work with Sandy and Bill, Mr. Manchester, Ms. Dable, on kind of identifying what resources our teachers could need or could use that meets our needs as also the needs of all of our students. So I'm going to turn it over to them to do most of the talking for this piece, and then we can answer any questions you guys may have.
Perfect. And feel free to stop us anytime during the presentation. So first thing, what do we want to look at? Sandy and I, there's a bunch of things out there, and these were the six that we kind of looked at and, you know, siphoned through and see what was good. The best thing about this part was, if five of those disappeared, any of those would have been usable and good for us. So we kind of started on a good leg to stand on. So then we whittled it down to the top three through discussions with other districts and just our own research through McGraw-Hill, Pearson's, which is the Envisions 2.0, and then Big Ideas. And again, that was from suggestions from administration, the teachers at the middle school, and we got it down to the last three. Now, looking at how are we going to evaluate this, both Sandy and myself, we kind of looked at, well, what do other schools do, and looked at what our own district did. And talking to Lisa, there was already a rubric in place through a national organization that they had used when they looked at the elementary resources for the math program. So not wanting to reinvent the wheel, and something that, again, was a national publication, we ended up to use the same rubric that they did. And again, one of our major goals when we went into this was that everyone had a voice, the math teachers in the middle school, some of the specialists from the special ed department, and people that worked with the math teachers. And we tried to look at, how can we have them have a voice and, at the end, have some data to back up what decision we're going to make? And that's what we did. So the rubrics focused on, from the Common Core, from the content, focus, coherence, rigor, and then also, what align to the eight mathematical practices. And obviously, it's been a huge shift. And again, me coming in this year, middle school math hadn't got any resources since the transition. So they've been, you know, kind of piecemealing what they had to do. And that's a lot of work. As a teacher of 21 years, 2011, when the Common Core came in, was a big shift. And I know some things got pushed up from the elementary school. And as a high school teacher, I love it because we just shoved everything down in the middle school. And it was a huge change for the middle school. So it's, I feel for them, and I'm glad we're actually getting to the point where we're making some decisions and getting them some resources they can use. So that's what we looked at. And then a few other things. Obviously, like I said, technology is a huge piece in all of these. A lot of the key vocabulary words used and has been, you know, a big emphasis and been started down the elementary school. Again, how do the students learn? What ways can we show that? You know, not just one way. You know, the flexible grouping, within one class, you could have three to five to seven levels of students. And that's some of the things we, as teachers, are learning through the universal design, the UDL program. And just user-friendliness, that's going to be a change because it's going to be new for the teachers and that stuff we're going to train for. The assessment, you know, obviously, we're not using Park all 100%, but the MCAS 2.0 is going to have a Park component with technology involved. So now the teachers will, you know, we looked, is there a component where the students can use online? We're going one-to-one? That's something we're looking at. So that was all part of our assessment of what resources we were going to look at. On March 4th, the last CIT day, the three finalists for the publishers came in in the afternoon. They each had an hour to present, and our, all the teachers and a few of our extra special ed teachers were in there and could ask questions. They left a ton of material. It was, it was a lot of stuff for us to sift through. And so we had, again, three great presentations, and I think we left saying, wow, if there was only one of these, we'd be okay. But it was, it was a lot of information, a lot of, a lot of different ways to present the material, help the students learn it. And the teachers had a lot of legwork to put in. They had to go back. So we had three hours, but they took some time, planning time, working with Sandy, working in there, grade-level teams, looking at the resources. They spent time on their own time at home at night, flipping through the books, hey, do I like this? Does it get this point across? Looking at individual lessons. And then going back and ranking the three levels, and we'll take a look at that. So it was from March 4th, really, to about a week ago.
Yeah.
So it was almost a little over a month when we came up. And again, they rated separately, and we used the rubric that's here. And it's kind of small, but...
Yeah, sorry.
You could see there's 23 different points there. Questions 1 through 10 were ranked on a 0 through 4. And really, what we're looking at, a ranking of a 3 adheres to the criteria, a ranking of a 4 meets all criteria exemplary. And then questions 11 through 23 were ranked 0, 1, or 2. So what we did is we took the data of all the teachers that ranked this, and we used a Google form where they could fill it in on their own time. And we, we looked at, for 1 through 10, the percentage of teachers that ranked either a 3 or 4. And then for 11 through 23, the teachers that ranked it as a 2. And as you can see on the very bottom, I know it's confusing, but the very bottom in the gray there, Envisions had 92%. The next one was McGraw-Hill, 63%. And then the last one was 62%. So Envisions was above and beyond the other two. And I think, again, if, if they said only any one of those were the only ones that exist, I think we'd be in a good situation. And we, truly, and I try to be honest, like, hey, don't just vote for it because that's what the elementary school does. Go and rank it, put your own spin. If it's something we can live with, I think that's extra care on top that, hey, this is a, this is a great thing for us. The parents will know it, the kids will kind of know it. But that was, it wasn't, hey, we're going to start here, let's look at what we're going to do. So the Pearson publisher, Envisions 2.0, we're going to pilot it next year with all the teachers, and then the following year will be our full implementation. And then steps we got to take, we've already reserved them for the May 13 CIT day, where they're going to come in and start, start looking at it. Now, the tough part is, we haven't had resources. Now there's this many resources. It's kind of like taking a sip out of a fire hydrant. It's going to be a lot of stuff, so we have to really pare down, what can we do in year one? And there's going to be a small component that we can look at. And then, as the teachers feel comfortable, each year, we'll be able to add on to that. So May 13th, they'll come in, and we'll have, I think, a full three-hour time with, with someone from Pearson. And then we'll find some time over the summer, and then that's going to be our focus for professional development, for the middle school math for all of next year. And again, they, the teachers and the support staff did a really great job sifting through a lot of material. And again, I think at the end of the day, even at the beginning of the six things we looked at, if any one of those would have been good, and I think we picked what's going to be best for us. So we're very excited moving forward.
And I think for me, that one of the biggest components was teacher ownership over the process. I think the teachers clearly, by indicating the evaluation of resources, believe that this is the best choice for us. I think it is a nice, you know, the cherry on the cake, the sundae, isn't, is it, is an extension of what we're already doing and the way students are being taught K5. So as we roll this out, students will be familiar with kind of some of the instructional strategies. It will look different because the material is different, the complexity is different. But all in all, some of the strategies, some of the features that we're working on K5 will be able to be extended as we kind of go through the process over the next couple of years.
Does anyone have any questions? Mrs. Brusad?
I have a handful of questions, and I don't want to monopolize the discussion at all, so I'll...
You can ask mine if you like. They're the same.
Well, they might, they might not. But the first one, I'll try to do it chronologically. We had this discussion when we were considering this for the elementary school, I don't know, a little over a year ago. And at that time, I had to remember, but I also looked back at the tape to refresh my memory. Mrs. Ibelito made the presentation, and I think this is the same question you had. At the time, we thought that Envisions just went through sixth grade. So is this 2.0?
This is a new, so this is a new program they're coming out with. So this is going to be brand-new for Pearson as well. So, which is exciting. So, but we're not the only folks, our district's going to be piloting next year. North Reading is also piloting Envisions, as well as, I believe, Wakefield. I'm not remembering off the top of my head. But there are other districts who are with us, which I think will also be valuable so we can share resources and kind of, you know, go through the process together with both of our staff, all of our staff, so...
It's so new. It's copyright 2017.
Okay.
So it's, it's brand-new.
Out of the box.
And we tried to get them in in January.
Yeah.
They didn't have enough material to come present to us. So that's one of the reasons we moved it to March.
And I actually just went to go hear some of the authors speak on Friday in Burlington. And there were multiple schools represented there, too, looking at the program.
How do you, how do you envision the pilot working? Are we selecting certain classrooms?
No. We're going to do... School why? All nine, all nine teams, all nine math teachers, plus we're language-based classrooms as well. Our special educators will also be in the pilot, so our inclusion class teachers, our Learning Center teachers, so they can work with our math teachers to be able to not only help in the classroom, but in our Learning Center academic support periods, reteach, preteach, those strategies as well. So it's, it's, it's everybody. It's, you know, we're all going to do it together because I think ultimately, if we all do it together, that's more support for each other, for all of our teachers.
And I'm working with Pearson directly in how we plan out our professional development, like, what, what are the needs we currently have? You know, how do we structure each professional development day so that it runs smoothly for our teachers? Others go, so I don't monopolize.
I think, just as an aside, too, that by piloting, there's no expense to us. So we're not making an investment yet. We want to make sure that this is the right match for Wilmington Public Schools. And if so, then what will happen is you'll, you'll see us do, similarly, as we did with the elementary, it'll be as a curriculum purchase, show up in the capital plan. I'm guessing it may be, I don't, similar expense, but I don't even have a sense of that at this point.
Mrs. Burns?
I have two questions. Stemming, I, too, reviewed the tapes, and that was like an hour and a half just on Envisions alone, if you can remember.
I thought I brought my...
I had two questions. At that time, Big Ideas was looked at and was well-liked, but for the fact that it didn't yet have a middle, a high school piece developed. And I, and from what I gathered from the discussion from that evening, it was December And I, and from what I gathered from the discussion from that evening, it was December 10th, 2014, and with the sidebar discussions I had with Dr. Burnham, the thought was, transitions wasn't, had come up as a concern with regards to the middle school, to the high schools. They were looking for a curriculum that could extend from the middle school into the high school. And I did not know if that, in fact, that thought process had changed and if so, what was the circumstances behind it? I do know, and I, and Mrs., forgive me, I'm fucking, doing it from memory, that at that time, I believe, and I don't want to misquote Mrs. Peters stating that at the time that the, with the curriculum that the vertical team developed, it was very, at that time, what was out there, it was very similar. And I was just, I just wanted to get, and have, ask that question.
So I think when we think about curriculum six to eight, we always think about kind of the end result of where we want our students to end up. I think it's slightly a little, a little different at the middle school level where we are focusing on a whole host of different standards where I think, and I'll defer to Mr. Manchester, that at the high school, it's a little more compartmentalized. You have Algebra I, you have Algebra II, you have geometry. Where at the middle school, you have a whole host of skills, like numbers, number sense, statistics, and all build into one. So I think when we think about the relationship with the high school, I think this will prepare our students to do whatever they choose to do in math.
So it'll be a good bridge?
I think so. I think it's going to prepare our students not only for the skills and the mathematical practices, but also the explaining of their answers and the thinking of their rationale. Because that adjustment from K-5 to six, eight, there are some really abstract concepts we're asking our students to do that were pushed down from the high school. And so that relationship has to be, I think, well-thought-out. And I think the relationship that, you know, Ms. Dable, Mr. Manchester, myself, Ms. Peters have kind of cultivated this year, that's clearly that transition piece is important. But for this component, we weren't as focused on the high school piece, but it, it'll work out for us either way.
But I, I just want to add, I think we also took input from the middle school teachers of things, seeing how transitions worked or didn't work. And that's part of her discussion with the math part.
I was just.
For the program of studies, because that's going to come up.
I'd be interested in seeing how that eighth grade piece kind of makes that bridge to that in high school.
In the school.
Yeah.
I'm here for a long time today, so we'll get to that too.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't want to, you know.
Yeah. But we had the discussion with the middle school first before we had, that was, it was all part of the, it's all part of the big discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
So talking about transitions.
Yes.
You just gave me a segue. I'm going to, I'm going to hold one of my questions for the discussion of the program of studies because I think.
Yeah, got it.
It, there's kind of some overlap here, but anyway.
There absolutely is.
All right. So this year's fifth graders are using Envisions, correct?
Yes.
So next year, they will be sixth graders. They will be used to using Envisions.
Correct.
This year's sixth graders may have been part of the pilot.
Correct.
As fifth graders last year.
Correct.
This year's seventh graders, who will be eighth graders.
Rising seventh graders.
Have never used Envisions. They've got one year left at the middle school.
Correct.
And then next year, they're going to the high school, which is going to be a whole different ballgame. Has there been any consideration of maybe leaving the rising eighth graders out of the pilot so as not to give them one more transition?
Can I just add right here? This is one of my major problems with this whole program right now. So I totally agree with this question.
So I think we did consider it. But I think when you think about a pilot, I think the hardest, the hardest year is always the first year, right? So, you know, for, for students who, for our rising, for our rising fifth graders and for our rising sixth graders.
Yes.
I think we're in a pretty good spot.
Right.
I think when we talk about our eighth grade students next year, the, we have no resources. So our student, our teachers are pulling from all sorts of different, and they do a heck of a job. They work extraordinarily hard, kind of making something from nothing. But I'm feeling very confident that if we, if we do a pilot and everybody does it together, I think that is more meaningful and fruitful for both our teachers and our, and our students. Because Pearson does have extension products that associated with Envisions for, like our algebra students and for our, you know, our traditional students. I, I completely understand what the concern might be, but I'm feeling confident that our teachers are going to be able to do this and not miss a beat, going back to Ms. Burns' question earlier, not miss a beat when they get to the high school.
And just to piggyback, I know eighth grade, if you're not in Algebra, there's 32 standards. And some of those standards are overlapped in Algebra I. So a lot of those students are going to go into Algebra I in, at the high school. So I, I look at same, same thing. It's, it's, it's really, at some point, it's going to have to be year one. And, and we, we did talk about that a little bit. And, and I think one of the thoughts was, let's, let's train everybody at the same time, get them good at it. And, and so now they have a strict plan because they are working hard and just trying to help them to work smarter. Because it's, it's, like Amy just said, they're pulling from a lot of resources, so.
It would end.
There's a, there's a lot of overlap though. So it's, as big of a picture as it is, if, if, as they have that transition, many of those students will go to Algebra I and a lot of those same standards will be covered.
And it's.
Just as the cricket.
I just want to add too, it's a Common Core-based program too. And we do Common Core at the high school also. So right there, we have some of that overlapping transition built within the program.
One second question.
Yes. Oh, sorry, I missed.
No, I just, when you're talking about the seventh graders going to eighth graders, but what was the percentage of the fifth graders that were part of that pilot program? Because it's quite a few sixth graders that are going in the seventh grade that didn't participate. So we're talking about a lot more than just seventh graders going into eighth.
I would defer to Ms. Filito because that was prior to me.
So the fifth grade for the pilot last year, we actually, most grades only had two classrooms, but in the fifth grade, we had three classrooms. So approximately about.
Three out of how many?
Uh, let's see. We did it in our freshman last year. Three classes maybe out of.
Six or seven. Seven at the north, six at the west.
So less than half. Less than half.
Oh, yeah.
So there's a lot more than just seventh graders going to eighth.
Correct. But I think to have that seventh grade class, or even like have a teacher being the first year that they're trying something, and then eighth grade is the first year that the teacher's, you know, attempting the, a new program, if we do it all at the same time, I think it's, I, again, I go back to my kind of position of it's more meaningful to do it all at the same time. It is a change. That's absolutely abundantly clear. But I think it's for the better of our students. I really do.
My concern with the question is, that specific group, are you going to have some students that have experience with that and some that don't? How is that going to affect the way that lesson's taught in a classroom where you have some students that had experience with a pilot and some that didn't?
I think it's going to help.
Yeah.
I think those kids can help move along some of the other kids that didn't have that experience.
I, I would agree. I think you're, I think we're kind of, we're going to have to hypothesize about what that would look like. But I think if you've got kids, students who are used to kind of that structure and that, and those instructional strategies, I think they'll be able to help their peers along the way as well.
I was, I was just going to say, also from watching the program implemented at the elementary level, what I've, what I see is really great about Envisions is that there are so many built-in assess, formative assessments, so that kids are constantly sort of being engaged as to where they are. And then they are grouped appropriately. And sometimes they're grouped homogeneously and sometimes heterogeneously. Sometimes the grouping happens so that the kids who are, students who are more advanced can support those students. And sometimes they're grouped such that the more advanced students can be given the accelerated opportunities while the kids who are struggling can be given the interventions. And that's what's really great about Envisions is it has both opportunities for accelerated learners and for struggling learners with intervention. So I think the differentiation that's built into the program and the fact that it's based on universal design for learning principles helps to be able to make sure that all the needs of students are being met no matter where they're at. One other thing I just want to throw out there, and I don't, I hesitate to say it only because I don't want anybody to think that assessment had any part of this decision with respect to PARC, MCAS, but next year is, you know, a new assessment. For all intents and purposes, it will be PARC, even though they'll call it MCAS 2.0. So it will be full testing of sort of the Common Core standards. And it is a hold harmless year. So for our eighth grade students, they're going to be probably better prepared by doing Envisions for a PARC-like test as a result of having gone through Envisions and to be receiving that instruction at a time when the results of the assessment, they'll be protected, if you will, by a hold harmless.
And those same students, we still don't know what they're doing at 10th grade from the state. So that's, that's kind of scary as a high school teacher. But some of the points you guys asked about will also be addressed with, with some of the program of studies things hopefully as well.
I think when, what you were just saying, I think part of the, the problem is, I believe that the eighth grade test is the hardest math test.
Absolutely.
Without a doubt.
Absolutely.
And that for them, we all worry about the 10th grade, passing the 10th grade, but I think we need to worry about the eighth grade.
Yes.
And to have the support that our teachers need for that eighth grade. We all know that my feelings about the Envisions, I went along with it because I really felt the teachers wanted it, we should see how it works. And I did see it in action last year and the, but having lived through it this year, I have to say that for, and I have reasons why I think this happened, for the fourth grade and fifth grade, I think we didn't take into consideration, and I, and I want, I would like you to ask the Pearson people this. It's built, it's built like a ladder. First grade, you have these things you introduce. Second grade, you add more to that, et cetera. When you start kids at the fourth grade and the fifth grade in this kind of a program that's been built upon and they don't have the first four rings to it, or first three rings, you're leaving them, because I get the feeling that it's such a strong program that has to be done, this, 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 this. If kids don't get, say Part B, they don't get it, you don't have time in the program for them to learn Part B. And so you just keep going. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out. How do we get it? And I will say that it has clicked in, in the month of February. So it took from the beginning of the year to February to click in for some students that we know. And almost lost somebody who really liked math. And I, I hear from grandparents all the time, I can't help them with the, I can't help them with the math. They're so upset about it. And what are we really teaching them? Why can't we teach them? How do, how do they not know the, the math component?
And I think when you talk about math, well, when you talk about math instruction, there is the operational pieces of it, the calculation. And then there's also the kind of those, and more abstract thinking. And I'm probably going to defer to Ms. Filito, but I think, yeah, it's a cha, it's a change. But if you look at the Common Core and you look at how, with the standards, how the standards were written prior to 2011, and you look at the reality of what we're facing now and that, that assessment piece, I think the superintendent is right. We didn't, we didn't anticipate what the state was going to do. You never know what they're going to do. But we were, again, trying to go with what 21st century skills, real-world application, differentiated learning, all of those pieces this product provides. So that's why, again, that's why we kind of went the way we went.
And I, and I think too, you just brought up, you know, it would have been great if we, as a nation, said, hey, we're going to start in kindergarten. And one class goes through, imagine having an 11th grader in Algebra II, which I did, hey, you haven't had 10 years of support and I'm doing the new Common Core. And that was dragging someone through a year. Maybe it's been a shock to the system, but I think, like you just said, the more we go on, and that's where you almost don't want to put off that time. Because now, and, and hearing from the teachers, wait, we can't wait a year. You know, if we did this over three years, that, the eighth graders would have been, those teachers would have said, wait, this is good, but we don't get it, you know? So that's where, they're going to be under a learning curve too. Like I said, there's this much material for them to use. We're thinking year one, they got to get great at this, year two, it's going to take a four or five-year process for them because it's, it's a lot of material.
And the, correct me if I'm, the issue is the standards. It's, it's not so much the, the materials are aligned to the standards. It's the standards that shifted. And right now, we don't have materials aligned to the standards. Now we would have materials.
And I think, and now from what I'm seeing with the publishers and what they're creating for schools to use as math programs, they finally caught up to what the Common Core is asking our students to learn. And I, and Envisions, from what I've seen, is the best one that they've got it. They've got the Common Core built directly into the curriculum and its best teaching practices built right within it. So it's following that philosophy.
For the eighth graders next year, however, if the, if the teachers, are you going to closely work with those teachers so that if they find out that whatever they're teaching at this point, the kids just don't have enough background for it, we have to come at it another way? And they need to stop and they need to work on it, whatever, whatever that need may be. Are we going to, I think that's what Mrs. Broussard was, basically, that's what we've all been saying.
It's like two transitions though. Because they'll be transitioning eighth grade into this curriculum piece and then they'll again be transitioning into the high school. And if, and I'm not just, I'm just speculating, if, let's say the eighth graders don't pick it up until close to the MCAS ELA, I mean. I mean, I'm not saying that they want to benefit in some respect, but I, I'm still at a, I'm, I'm still at a loss and concerned about doing the, diverting a little bit from, because I, because that was our first question, why, last year, why not go right to eighth grade? And the thought was, because of the transition piece, they find students struggle between eighth grade and ninth grade and that the vertical team, you know? And I understand about the resources and tools, and that's why we were looking for the curriculum. And a lot of what the publishers had out there, there wasn't curriculum. The standards came out, but there was no curriculum to support that. So I know certain, McGraw was one of them, just kind of patched what they currently had. And, and, but my concern is, I, I still, my, I think my biggest focus is making sure that that bridge, and even for, because I'm not, I don't feel comfortable using next year's eighth graders as guinea pigs, per se, on a pilot. I think is my concern.
I think there needs to be clarity between textbooks.
Yes.
Please. Sorry. There's so much going on here and I'm kind of like, I'm behind, so I'll try my best to kind of encapsulate it. Don't indulge me, thank you.
Yeah.
There's a difference between teaching what the textbook tells you and the standards. And so for many districts, this is a huge shift as well, that you actually have to delve deep and unpack the standards, which, as was stated, the standards were released in 2011. Wilmington adopted those standards in 2012. We decided not to even look at a textbook series to support the standards because we knew that there wasn't a textbook series that would have the rigor and all the shifts that we needed to make our students 21st century ready. So we did work, we unpacked the standards, we did the best we could on spiraling math trailblazers to support the students of our district, to give them the best education possible for that moment in time. So then the process developed of kind of what was talked about here. We looked at the national criteria for a great program and the value that we wanted to have in adopting a textbook series to align to our standards. And as you heard here today, Envisions did that. It seems like, oh, everyone, it was like an umbrella, okay, five, you're just doing this regardless of four or five, whether you had the prerequisite skills. But they had the prerequisite skills because the standards are the standards of the standards, regardless of the textbook or the unspiraling or whatever. And so I think the difference and the struggle came in many different forms. I think it came partly due to social media and people's fear of, this is so different, I didn't learn it this way, and how can we support our kids at home? And that's a real fear. And so to support that, you know, we did a lot of upfront work. We're doing parent cafes. support that, you know, we did a lot of upfront work. We're doing parent cafes, I did one this morning, to support parents. Letters went home about the homeschool connection of the program. So when thinking about jumping forward into middle school, and talking about eighth grade, and using them as guinea pigs, I think that's kind of, with all due respect, an...
Forgive me, I don't want to be insulted.
No, 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 no. An unfair characteristic, though, because the middle school teacher's been working really, really hard, as was stated today, by taking the standards like we're supposed to, as great educators, doing best practices, to figure out, how can I fill in these gaps and these shifts that have happened? I mean, there are standards that used to be third grade standards, that are now seventh grade standards. Those materials aren't just poof, come from the, you know, air. The teachers have worked really, really hard to find those materials. And so then here we are today, where at the time, in December 2014, when you looked at Envisions Middle School, it was not an aligned program. It didn't have the same criteria that K to five has, but now it does. It's proven itself. The teachers had that voice to look at it and invest in it. And actually, the middle school program has a lot more, several mature features to it, I'm sure they'll talk about as well. It has an engineering STEM feature for those students who need to excel, or have the desire to excel in math. It has something called Project Three Math. Again, for those students who need to excel, it has the differentiated component. So I just feel like, and for us, this rolls off our tongue, right? Because this is what we do, this is what we live, this is what we breathe every day, this is what we're trained for. And so part of our job, too, is to support and educate people who this isn't something they live and breathe all the time, but are trying to do their best to understand. So I just, you know, I hope that was helpful.
It is, it's, I'm just trying to...
And make some connections.
Just trying to connect last year's conversation with, and the thought that I understood it to be, with this piece, and it'd be the first one, it seemed a little reserved.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the questions, 'cause we don't, if we don't have those questions, then we, these outstanding things live out there instead of a collaborative conversation.
What was the main reason why the teachers picked this and liked this the best?
Well...
Yeah.
I think there were a lot of, and I'll speak for them, if that's okay?
I'll speak for them.
As Bill said, I liked all three.
And I went in with the idea that I liked big ideas the best, because that's what I've been using for the past two years, 'cause I don't have a program. I have impact books sitting up on my shelf. Everything we're doing with all the kids is being created by us, which is taking a lot of time. I still like big ideas. The presentation of the Envision and the McGraw-Hill, I liked better. I liked the consumable workbook. It's better than a kid carrying around a textbook. To me, I think it's more eye-catching, 'cause I haven't used Envisions, I don't have young kids. I've heard a lot of the talk about Envisions. I've answered some problems from someone had young children. But I, I think it's more catching to the kids, so I, I was okay with McGraw-Hill and Envisions. I listened to the eighth grade teachers, 'cause I teach sixth grade. As Lisa said, standards are standards are standards, and as she was saying that, I'm saying, for eighth graders, functions are functions are functions. They're gonna learn their functions next year. The eighth grade teachers felt that Envisions had the best rigor. And I bow to them on the rigor, because they have the hardest test, they have the hardest job in that building. They're happy with the rigor with the Envisions program. We're all very happy with the technical components. There's things to help enrich experiences. There's a lot, it seems to have a lot of intervention, which we seriously need at the middle school. I have faith in my colleagues that if, when they teach the eighth graders functions next year, they do have the background. It doesn't matter what they're teaching them with. They know what they need to know, and they know how to get them there. I guess that's the best way I can say it.
Thank you, Mrs. Vinazzola.
And I was just gonna add too, and I think teachers teach, writing curriculum can be very difficult. I know I was not trained in that, and you kinda learn through 20 years. So if, if she just went to the publishers, and those, that's all they do, is write the curriculum and make it match the standards. So now we're taking that, creating the curriculum off their plate, and then they can work on the interventions. Who needs to slow down? Who needs this extra review? Who can be two units ahead of where we are? So now that time can be on that, instead of, what am I gonna do for the next unit? I have these five things, I need another three. So the curriculum compo, the resources are there, now they can focus on the kids, and, and I think that's, that, that'll be a positive.
I think we're, you're looking at a group who are not mathematicians, per se.
Edit that out.
Except, right here, I'm surrounded by them, but the rest of them, when I taught at Medford High School, we, we became an apple model school. We were the first, one of the first groups to have apples. We didn't pay for them for years. And so what, my question is, I hope that we're going to have somebody who's, and I think maybe you might be able to be it, Lisa, who's really got a way to talk with this group and see what we're gonna get for doing this in the end. Like, not let them get away with just giving us the pilot thing for the first year, but go, looking down a few years, what are we going to get for doing this? Because, and that's not like trying to get money or get something else for them, but hopefully, there's something that would put us a little bit ahead, because we are ahead in trying to work with them.
Yeah, the publishers have, have been really good, and, and I, I acknowledge that they've been good, but I also think part of the credit is, is to Mrs. Polito, who maybe should come with us all when we go to buy our next cars. But I think it's, part of it is, you know, the negotiation. But they have also been very supportive, because they recognize that we're, they know the position that we're in, that we're adopting this program, even if it's a pilot. Obviously, we wouldn't do a pilot if we didn't, weren't thinking long-term, and they, they were gonna do everything in their power to make sure that we are committed and we stay committed to that program. I also love the idea that we have some neighboring districts that we can actually go beyond. There's gonna be, I would imagine, most of the PD for math teachers is gonna be Envisions next year, as it was for elementary this year. But even beyond that, as we continue to be able to collaborate with those districts who'll be at the same place as we are, to be able to continue to provide Pearson or non-Person-provided professional development, and not just a one-and-done thing, but to continue to support the practice.
Well, and also, could we, at some point, maybe become a model group where, where we used to have people come in and we'd show them how we use the apples and things like that?
I think our success is their success, and their success is ours. It started in the elementary school, and, yeah.
Pearson is already asked, he's usually, there's a user group, but it's on the South Shore, and when they meet in Norwood, I can go. When they go to Duxbury, I said, "That's my limit, I'm not, I can't get on it." But Pearson is asked if Wilmington Public Schools would be the owners of the North Shore User Group, and for Southern New Hampshire. And I, I don't like to talk about myself too much, but they basically said that they felt like our pilot and our rollout of Envisions math was the best in the nation. I think it was the terminology they used.
You say you should've told us that the first time.
Right? They said it to me in private, but then they said it to Miss Stable on the phone, and I was kinda overwhelmed by that, to hear it coming from somebody else. And, and I don't take full credit for that by any means. It was this group, it was the teachers, the administration.
Teachers have done a wonderful job.
And the data, I'm just gonna say, the data is showing such improvement in the area of math for our students. And I'm proud, very proud, to say, our language-based classrooms at the elementary level are using the program, as well as our substantially separate programs with much success. So, yeah.
My last question is about the, the actual professional development, because it seems to me that we're talking strategies and tools, per se, but are we teaching in professional development, are we teaching the math, or are we teaching the program? Why do we need this much professional development?
I'd say the program.
I think there's a lot that the program comes with. And so you just, you need to, it's very overwhelming from a teacher's perspective to just say, here's the program, go with it. So you have to really be logical with how you structure and organize the professional development. Like, okay, we're gonna do this today, let's see how this rolls out over the next month, and when we meet again, what type of professional development do we need so that we can continue to support you in using and implementing the program?
Because I think, as Mrs. Vinazzola said, the math's the math's the math's math. Functions are functions are functions. That's not gonna change.
Right.
But how they, or the materials that they, resources that they use to teach it, or maybe the differentiation based on the materials that we have, that's gonna be a little different. It's gonna look a little different. So that, those pieces are what we're gonna have to work on.
Right.
Not necessarily the, the mathematical calculations, or how to, how to do something. It's gonna be how to deliver it.
It's not the content. These, these teachers are content matter experts. We're not teaching them math. They know the content, but the program is very rich with different strategies targeted for different levels. And so how you really leverage those strategies to reach all students, I think is a big part of what the PD will be focused on. And there's never enough opportunities to have to sit down and start to unpack standards and align your instruction to standards. There's never enough time for that. So if this is an opportunity to do that at the same time, it's just going to improve and enhance the instruction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beal.
Yeah, when we first looked at this for the elementary levels a couple of years ago, did Pearson share with us that they were, that they were developing middle school curriculum?
That was before any of us were here, so.
Well, they did.
Yes.
Okay, and, and do...
It was in a very, very...
Infant stage.
Abstract way, I'm sure.
Yes, it's still... Yes.
But do they have plans to develop any high school-level materials?
I can't answer that with accuracy.
They haven't given you any indication of abstractly?
Well, my, my wheelhouse is elementary, so I, I know that really well. But what I can say about our representative, Sean Duffy, he is second to none. I can pick up the phone anytime, ask any question, and he answers it for me within 24 hours. So...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, but I can get that question answered for you.
If our students could follow it all the way through.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I'm actually speaking to the woman who's, you know, who's representing Pearson, and she was telling me about, she was gonna look more into like the Algebra I program and how it sort of plays out. So she's, I'm kind of in conversations with her about that right now.
Excellent. We all set, then?
Yes.
This time next year, we'll be listening to how great it went.
Yes.
We'll be positive here. Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're not...
I had a point, but don't we vote on it?
Oh, who had a question?
Don't we have to vote on this curriculum?
As a pilot, no.
No, not as a pilot, but it went in...
In the future, what's, when we, what will happen is, will, as we did with the elementary version, is we'll include it in the capital plan. You will vote it first as a curriculum adoption, and then you would vote on whether to support the funding.
I would love to see it maybe midway of the year, you know, just see what it looks like.
We can arrange for a visit.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much, folks.
You don't even have to stand, though.
Don't go away, Mrs. Doran.
Listen, I'm here all night.
I think you're here. Our next item of business is the Middle School Program of Studies.
Come back. I never left.
This one we're going to have to vote on, so this is...
This one, you would, there's a motion to accept the Program of Studies.
Okay.
All righty.
So...
The Program of Studies at the middle school level, I think, is a really important document, 'cause I think it guides a lot of, of what we do. So, a couple of things. This was in our school improvement plan. Again, when I, when I started in July, I think a lot of the staff wanted to evaluate and look at this Program of Studies to make sure it was reflective of what we were doing, how we were doing it, and what was best for our students. So, we did that. We did that through a couple of different avenues. I was working with my administrative team, we were working with curriculum team leaders, our six to 12 curriculum team leaders, and then we were also looking at, as well as our liaisons, as well as our content team teachers across the board, Unified Arts, all core content, foreign language reading, special education. Recommend, recommendations for changes were brought to the administrative team. We kinda mulled it over, looked, looked to see what, what was best for us moving forward, brought it back. They, they edited it, rewrote it, tweaked it. We looked it over, we sent it back for kind of a final, does this work for, for the teachers? Does this work for our kids? And then brought it back to me, and then I sent it to you guys. So, that's kind of how we've gotten here. It's been a pretty arduous process. Some of it was minor. Some of it was wording of things and putting things in present voice. Some of it, as we're gonna talk about, the three things that I wanna talk about today are the, kind of the bigger challenge, or changes that we're, we're gonna be undertaking for next year. The first piece of this is our science curriculum. Mrs. Vasione, our sixth, one of our sixth-grade science teachers, has spent a considerable amount of time in a cross-disciplinary science team, where science teachers, cross-grade level, I believe, we have a fifth-grade teacher on that team, as well as a high school teacher on that team. They meet collaboratively once a month, or once, you know, very, pretty frequently over the last two years. And they've developed curriculum units, full-out curriculum units for the next-generation science standards that have been adopted very recently by the DESE. So our grade-level descriptions have changed. They've moved some units around, they've, they've squashed some things together, they've thrown out others. So, in terms of, and it kinda relates to the conversation we may have had a little bit earlier, piloting all of the units in grade six for next year, because as we move forward, and we don't know what that science and technology engineering test is gonna look like, because that grade eight test is a comprehensive test, we need to make sure that we're hitting all the standards, but also embracing and adopting the new ones as we go. So we're being very conscientious of, okay, what moving parts in seven and eight, where can we kind of change, and what do we need to keep the same even temporarily for the next year or two, to make sure our current sixth-grade students, by the time that they are eighth graders, have all the standards that they need to perform well on the assessment as it stands right now. Now, next year, they could say, hey, it's a whole new test, and we're kinda, we'll be where we'll be. But I think the science department has worked really hard this year. All of their CIT time and department meeting time has been realigning their standards, realigning the curriculum map, and also starting to build units using backwards design and UDL, kind of priorities and practices. We're gonna be assessing kind of our resources in terms of our microscopes, our triple B balances, our, our beakers, to make sure that we have the resources we need to do some of the labs that are gonna be required. So those are, that's gonna be an ongoing conversation about what kinda, what our material needs might be, as well as down the line, but probably some textbook conversations about kind of what those resources are, because we've moved some things around based on what the state has given us. The next piece of this is the social studies piece. What we were discovering, based on kind of our grade seven DDM data, is students don't have a strong sense of geography. And so how our, our pathway is now, it's sixth grade, ancient history, seventh grade world geography, eighth grade world history I, which is Roman times, too, about the French Revolution. And then high school picks it up at, at world II or US I, depending on the pathway that that student wants to take. Because the students were coming in not, you know, the, the social studies piece was not as strong, we came together as a group, really had some meaningful discussions about what was best for our kids in terms of foundational skills. It's sometimes hard to talk about Mesopotamia and Greece when you don't know where Ohio is, or you don't know where Brazil is. That's all relative, right? So if you're gonna talk about really interesting cultural things and events in time, and being a former social studies teacher, it's what I'm passionate about, you gotta have context. You gotta know where in the world you are and why it's important. How does geography impact socioeconomics and politics and culture and resources? So for next year, our grade six and grade seven students will be taking world geography. In the 17, 18 school year, our grade six students will be taking world geography, our grade seven students will be taking ancient history, and then go right to world I. So it's chronologically together. Right now, if we have ancient times, and then we take a break, and then we go back, there's that disconnect there. It's, you know, it's hard to tell a story and compel kids to activate that prior knowledge from two years ago. So we've decided to do that for next year. Resources, we're gonna be putting most of our geography resources down into grade six. We are ordering some atlases, because our atlases are incorrect. They are old, and they are not accurate. So we'll be ordering some of those, and we'll also be ordering some other maps and materials for our teachers to, to use. The Ancient Civilizations textbooks will go up to grade seven. They'll start building their curriculum next year, taking kind of the fantastic things that grade six has done, making sure that what we have, what we need. And then for next year, for the 17, 18 school year, they will go to ancient history. And so when I, when we're tabbing these conversations, we also talk to, I talk to some of my colleagues about, what was your pathways and programs of study look like in a couple of different areas? These are the surrounding areas that have ancient, world geography in grade six, ancient in grade seven, and world history in grade eight. So we are in good company, in terms of what towns are trying to do. Winchester has an interesting hybrid of geography and ancient. They teach it together, but a lot of those towns also teach US in grade eight. We don't do that here. That's kind of a choice, district by district, based on the pathways the state can give us. The last piece of this, I think, we'll, we'll have more conversation about, I'm sure. Sixth grade's a pivotal transition year for us, and we acknowledge and value the fact that we need to meet the, not only the social-emotional needs of our students, but also the academic ones. We have to take time to make sure that our students are transitioning into our building successfully, and what we're finding is that our students do take time. It, it is a tough transition. You're going from a classroom of, you know, 25 kids, to a building of, right now, we're at 877 kids. One teacher to seven, with a locker, and extras, and Unified Arts, and after-school activities, and, and an earlier start time, and brunch, and all those kinds of things. So the data coming from the elementary school is really solid, and we know that our elementary school teachers have spent a ton of time on math and math instruction. These kids are, are building some really good, solid foundational concrete skills. What we're hoping to do is build upon those skills. And so as we move from more concrete to more abstract, inequality, statistics and probability, irrational, rational numbers, just to kind of name a few concepts that we hit, we need to make sure we're starting our sixth graders in a position of success. So what we have found is that because they're taking a longer time, our grade six math teachers aren't able to kind of cover everything we need to cover. Our fifth grade standard, there are 35 standards in grade five. The enhanced track, as it stands now, is 66, because you do all of grade six and half of grade seven. We can't get all of that done. With the kind of social-emotional needs of our students, it's hard enough being a sixth grader, without the additional stress and strain and anxiety that may happen, or does often happen, with being in an enhanced class and the rigor associated with it. As we've had plenty of conversation, I think Envisions math is gonna be able to help us extend, as well as our math strategies class, that we'll be able to group our students a little more homogeneously next year for that, for that fifth class, that will be math strategies and reading. We'll group a little more homogeneously, be able to extend and do some interventions as well, depending on who the groups of students are, and based on their needs. We're also gonna have a much clearer placement process for grade seven and eight, for those students who we feel can handle that rigor. If you look at what the expectations are... We're also going to have a much clearer placement process for grade seven and eight, for those students who we feel can handle that rigor. If you look at what the expectations are, as it stands now, all forty-six standards for grade six and thirty-nine more for grade seven, all in the grade six year. So, sixty-five coming off of thirty-five standards. Enhanced in grade seven, half, so, half of the thirty-nine standards and then another thirty-three. And I think Mr. Manchester always says it really well, just because there's less standards doesn't mean they're, they're any easier. There's, you know, two boulders that weigh five hundred pounds versus ten boulders that weigh different varying weights. Algebra one has sixty-six standards and that matches what the high school does. So, the algebra one class we have and the algebra one class at the high school are the same in terms of standards being taught. What we're proposing is to have, to no longer have our enhanced grade six class. This would be what the pathway would look like for those students in the enhanced class. The pathway in and of itself isn't changing. Those students who are placed into the enhanced section in grade seven or can jump in at grade eight, so sometimes that switch, that proverbial switch doesn't flip until maybe midway through seventh grade and they can handle the rigor in grade eight, they'll be able to make that jump. But, they'll still be able to get to calculus. That pathway for enhanced still allows you to get to calculus. These are the recommendations based on, from 2012 from the DESE. The DESE is really kind of advocating that you don't have a grade six accelerated program. You work on that transition in. For those students who are traditional students, you are still able to get to calculus. I think that's a common, common or popular question that we always get. Can my student get to calculus by the time they're a senior? Yes, you can. You can do that if you double up. Now, not every student wants to take calculus either, but if they have a, you know, a wantingness to do that, it's available to them. But, not every kid, not every student is able to kind of take on that rigor, that extra piece at the middle school level. Again, that proverbial switch may not flip until they get to high school. These are, again, I did my kind of due diligence, due diligence. These are surrounding towns that don't have an accelerated class in grade six. Linfield did. They took it away a few years ago because they were also having some, some, you know, with the transitioning in and weren't seeing kind of the results that the, that they had hoped for in terms of either student performance or the social emotional pieces of transitioning in. We really think, it was not a decision we kind of said, oh, let's not have enhanced six anymore. It was a lot of discussion. I think it was a lot of discussion with Ms. Davil. It was a lot of discussion with Mr. Manchester about what that meant for high school. It was a lot of discussion with this grade six teachers about what our realities are. I think it was a lot of discussion with our seventh and eighth grade teachers about, okay, what does this do for us as a school, as a community? You know, ultimately, we're trying to do what's best for kids. Every decision that we make is what's best for kids. We feel as a faculty that this is what's best for kids in terms of transitioning them successfully to grade six, giving them a solid foundation on abstract concepts, and being able to place the students in the correct classes moving forward. So, they are successful. It's all about, at the end of the day, it's all about them. Questions and answers, I'm sure there's lots.
This is Ms. Ed.
So, I, I kind of held off on this question during our, our last discussion because there, but there is overlap. So, for next year's seventh and eighth graders who are in an enhanced class now, math class now, how does the Envision's pilot going to affect them? And then what happens for the, alright, so the seventh grade, the people who are going to be seventh graders next year, rising?
Sixth graders.
Okay, rising sixth graders. What happens for that in-between year where they've been in an enhanced program and now all of a sudden they're not?
So, they're still going to be enhanced, they're still enhanced in grade seven and eight. That's not changing.
Okay.
So, they're still an enhanced class in grade seven and they're still an enhanced class in grade eight.
Okay.
What we're facing in, you know, in terms of content coverage, we're going really fast, but we're not going really deep in grade six. So, the materials provided through Envision's, and you know, I will defer to Ms. Davil as well on this one, but they're assuring us that we have, they will be able to get us that, those extension materials. We're in conversations about the algebra one piece of this. And we don't know what that's going to look like just yet, but our algebra teachers, our grade eight teachers are feeling pretty confident, as are our seventh grade teachers, that Envision's is going to be able to give us what we need to make, to continue on that path. Our grade seven teachers are going to start out all of grade seven standards and half of grade eight next year. So, that, that's going to be, that's an enhanced class. That's, that's kind of the pathway. That's going to be all of like the first section of Envision's and then part of grade eight. We might not need a different resource. We might just need the consumable, half of a consumable for grade eight. They, we keep that consumable at the end of next year for our grade seven students, and we give it back to them at the beginning of year grade eight, so we can finish the second half.
Because I'm concerned. We've got, we've got competing interests here. We, I keep hearing us talking about rigor and making sure there's enough rigor. On the other hand, we're, we're, the perception is we're taking away a rigorous class because we're concerned about the anxiety and stress that may cause. So, it's, I'm having a challenge there. It, that's a tricky thing to deal with.
Can you go back to the slide, the first one?
I think one of the things, covering a lot of standards, and I think she summed it up, not going deep is not rigorous. I mean, one of, and again, tenth grade and eighth grade, all the MCAS tests, but even what the Common Core is asking at the high school level, they want you to think. They want you to be able to develop material. So, one of the things, again, we could cover a thousand standards each year, come to the next year and then you don't know any of it. So, the goal is, again, the standards, the seventh grade, sixth grade, forty-six standards, it's a lot. And it's a big jump in level from, you know, what they've been doing in elementary school. So, one, focus on them, go in deep, understand it, and, and again, that's what Common Core, the eight practices, really want you to dive into it, be able to critique other people's questions, and that takes time. Now, when you go to seventh grade, the goal is, we're going to get some of the eighth grade standards before the MCAS, you should dive into the, I think it's thirty-nine standards in seventh grade. So, yes, we're stepping back for the amount of standards, but we're going in deeper, which again, was the ultimate goal of the Common Core, to, again, don't, let's not cover everything an inch deep. So, for, whether it's some sort of project-based, whether some, something you have to present, or someone else presents and you have to reflect on what they said to really understand that you have an understanding of the math as a student. So, and again, the goal is, I know from the high school, I teach calculus. Can the kids get to calculus? That's great in calculus. Step one is calculus. Calculus is not the hardest class we teach at the high school, but it just encompasses from fractions through pre-calculus. So, step one is calculus. Step two and three are pre-calculus, there's some algebra two, geometry and algebra over the next couple of steps, and then we get to fractions, and, and kids stumble at all different stages. Doesn't mean I'm going to review fractions for a week. We're going to, we're going to really, you know, we'll talk about it and then, but we'll go on to the next calculus problem. Same thing, grade seven, how can you go in deep? You'll end up reviewing the grade six, grade five, grade four, and get ready for the grade eight standard. So, I don't, I think the goal is to just go in deep because when they come up and say calculus, I don't remember how to do fractions. Again, and that, and a lot of it, I think some of the old ways, and you still have to know the math facts, the Common Core wants everyone to get away from the tricks. Don't, don't teach the little tricks that I learned, you know, foil method, first out or in or last, like, again, scold, don't say foil method. It's the distributive property. So, it's, it's one rule for everything. And that's, it's, it's, it's much harder to do that, but it's really diving in deep and, because again, and we still get it, kids, I remember seeing that, I have no idea what to do. Okay, well, that's not one of my standards. I got to keep going. So, you know, again, slow down, but to be a, a better math student on what you're learning. And it, it is, it's a step back to take two steps forward, I think, big picture.
I think the way I see it from all the discussions that, you know, people have briefed me on as the decision-making has unfolded is that more coverage does not equate to rigor and that actually taking those, the rigor comes from the application of what they're learning, and nothing sets the knowledge and transfers the knowledge more than being able to effectively apply what you learn. That's something that when you try to cover that much standard, I imagine, is probably missing because you're flying through content and standards and using rules and you're not diving in and applying. And the Envision's program, I've seen it at the elementary level, has some really great applications to science, to social studies, to other subject areas, which really kind of, you know, sets that knowledge so that when they do move to seventh grade, they're just stronger mathematicians.
And I would respectfully put forth that the forty-six standards in grade six, for the physical trend, like going from one building to the next and all the kind of like intangible transitions, the rigor of those sixth grade standards are pretty significant. We're asking some kids to make some really huge mental leaps in terms of what we're asking them to do in terms of not only the calculation pieces, but also kind of how they think, why they think, what they think, explaining it in different ways, explaining it to their teachers and explaining it to their peers. But I would also put forth that the math strategies piece, I think it's going to be very meaningful in being able to provide some additional rich experiences for those kids who can extend. So, not only will they get in the classroom, but they're also going to get it in an additional kind of setting.
When you're talking about what they're getting and how the kids are getting it, and Mr. Manchester, you just said exactly what one of my concerns was about not teaching them what they have missed. That horrifies me as a teacher. I have to tell you, I'm really sorry, but that attitude horrifies me. Not your, I know it's not your attitude. It's the program attitude, and that's what's getting to me. When those kids, how do we get to the, we're trying to, we're trying to close the gap. How do we get to these lower kids who are not getting it and they're being left behind?
Well, I think, two things. Common Core builds it, a lot of spiraling. So, you see it here, unit one, you might see it beginning of unit three. It's going to hit it again, and I, it is hard. There's two, two ways to do it. Some, sometimes we teach to the lowest, lowest level student, and then that holds everyone down. We're going to go fast. Some of you, hey, just bear with us. We're going to, we're going to get through here. All the programs with the technology now, it might be, hey, we're in unit three. From the testing, and a lot of these programs have, if you can do a test online, it gives the teacher all the data. So, now we're in unit three. There's some kids that are going to be advanced. Hey, I'm going to give you this piece of the, the program where you're going to be able to go ahead. You're going to be like two units ahead. You dive in. Some are going to be half a unit ahead. The testing shows me that these five students are really far behind. Not only am I going to give you remedial work so you can kind of just get up to speed to where we are, I'll have some stuff that, that our math strategies teacher can continue to work with. Because it is, it is hard. I mean, that's the, the balance and, you know. And some of, some of the.
It's wonderful, excuse me, it's wonderful to see you all so passionate. We really appreciate it.
No, no, it is, it is, it is, it's, it's the sixty-four thousand dollar question or ten billion dollar question, you know, and this is the problem. Part of the problem with the Common Core is, hey, they just said, everything go to the middle school. As a high school teacher, I love it. You're going to have everything ready by the time you get to high school? Great.
Everybody's fixed. We're all good.
Yeah, no, and that, it's, it's hard. So, but you do have to balance, and that's where, that's where we don't want them thinking, what am I going to give them for a problem? The four hundred problems are already there online in the resource in this section. The problems are there. Oh, my goodness, Suzie is so far ahead of us. What can I give her to go ahead? Joey's struggling. How can I get him caught up? And again, instead of worrying, what am I going to, what materials can I gather? So, that's part of the problem, and then the balance goes with how you do each class.
Right, and that's why, going back to the Envision's program, it builds in that differentiation so that the kids who are not performing at the grade level, we can intervene and support those students to try and move them up to grade level. So, how the Envision's program works, they, it, each lesson ends with a concept check, it's called. It's kind of like an exit slip. And so, with that, there's questions, and from those questions, the teacher can say, okay, I'm going to assign points based on which questions they got correct. And then the next day the kids come in, I can place my students into small groups, and I can give an intervention to this group, and I can have my enhanced, the students who are performing above grade level, they can be doing some different work. And that's what the whole program is really built on.
And you can even do it, and I think it's, it's going to take time for the teachers, one-to-one, they all have a Chromebook in front of them. Stay in your same desks, but the teacher's assigned it based on what the data gave them, and hey, work on the next assignment that I gave you. You could have twenty kids doing twenty different things. But that's, that's part of the program where you, you're not teaching the program, but you're learning how to utilize all the benefits of the program.
And Envision's comes with its Pearson Realize, that it's a whole program that you can, it differentiates it for the students. So, it's a whole online component. They can log on. They, I, I believe it starts with a diagnostic test. It assesses the students, and then it tracks the students. So, they can be working on the, the content that they need to, to then move up to the next level. So, it's all done electronically for them as long as the, as teachers are, you know, implementing that into their classrooms, which is another intervention piece and another piece to, you know, provide the enhancement as well.
So, I basically misunderstood, and we're not saying that we're leaving a whole group where they are and just going past them. Because that's what I thought you said.
But as a teacher, but as a teacher, on, on a certain day, they have to keep going forward, but then, so they teach a lesson to everybody. At some point, the teacher can't teach twenty lessons at once. So, they'll teach the, what the standard is for the day, and there'll be a couple of days for it. They teach that lesson, but then as they work, the student might have problems that they struggled with from a week ago or two months ago, where these students might be working what they're really not going to see, or going very far in-depth, like, hey, I want you to create this project. And, and again, it can, the nice part about the online component is, you don't have to say, Johnny and Suzie, you're better than everyone else. Come over here. You can, you can do it within the program and online and technology. And then the teacher, you guys okay? What questions you have? Okay. And then they come over and help the students that are struggling. And again, twenty students, there's going to be twenty levels. And that's where, there's this much to help those twenty students. That's going to take a long time for the teacher to know all the tools on how to do that. So, start small and the more they can get, the better. So, and it's, it's hard.
I think it would, it might be helpful if people are interested to visit, I have a couple of classrooms in mind, some of the teachers that are using this program where you have the teachers that are using, I've got a particular fifth grade classroom in, in mind, where you have students who are there from, that are placed in sub-separate programs, who are included for math in that classroom and are able to access the curriculum because Envision's is so well differentiated. And you have sub-separate programs who are at the same place. They're, they're paced out the same as the general ed or the, you know, the partial inclusion classes as well. They're doing the same thing, and those kids are still, are learning. They're learning right alongside, but there's so much built in to help them. When I go into a sub-separate program or I go into a general classroom, they're in the same place, but there are opportunities to use those interventions to bring those students who are struggling along have just, that's what's producing the shift and, that we're seeing in the performance of the students.
And I think, just going back, I know when I started teaching twenty years ago, there could be five or six levels, and a kid was placed on a level in fifth grade, and they were tracked through high school, and that's, again, and I think kids graduated without the skills needed to be college and career-ready. And I think that's the big push is, we're giving them a diploma. They need to be ready. And again, there's a time constraint, and I think that's the battle is, hey, when you're going from sixth grade to seventh grade, we're saying you're ready. Seventh, eighth, and same thing. When they come to the high school, we expect certain standards to be covered because we're going to cover the algebra and geometry standards at a minimum before the MCAS. And this, I think, like you said, the tenth grade, MCAS for math, forty-two questions, fourteen of them are grade six, seventh and eighth grade standards. And usually, we don't have time to, to go over those standards, yeah. So, it's, we, hopefully, they see it, they get it, and when they come up, you know, there's, there's usually cut and dry. Hey, you, you got an MCAS, you didn't pass, you don't get a diploma, or you are ready and you can go on. So.
I was just going to say, a couple of us did have an opportunity to go into Mrs. Will Jack's classroom last year, and I guess the good thing is, is, and she was using Envision's quite successfully, and I, I remember her speaking about it at the meeting when we first discussed it. It wasn't obvious that there was differentiated instruction going on, which I think is a good thing, but at the same time, I do think it would be really helpful, certainly as we get into it next year at the middle school level, show me specifically how. I want to see it.
Yeah.
Everyone's telling me that you can.
Right.
Awesome. I'm, I'm with you. I'm drinking the Kool-Aid, but show me how. I want to see the differentiation happening. And then I want to see the successes that it's creating.
And I think we all do.
No, and, and I'll let you know, at the high school, so we have, like, I have kids in calculus. I have some kids that have a ninety-nine average.
Yeah.
And some that are at a sixty-two.
Yeah.
There's differentiation between there. So, they're in the same classroom. The student that has a ninety-nine is getting much different experience than the sixty-two. So, as, you know what I mean? And now, at the high school also, for geometry and algebra two, we have honors, A level and B level. So, you could have a sophomore in honors algebra two, and we could have a senior in B level algebra two B. So, that differentiate, it starts to spread out, whereas in the middle school, you're a sixth grader, you're taking sixth grade math, no ifs, ands or buts, seventh grade. So, it's really hard to kind of keep them with their level, and some of the kids, when they get to high school, they're going to be like a rocket ship taking off. Yeah, absolutely. So, it's, it is, again, as a high school trained teacher, it's hard to keep people in the. it's hard to keep people in the little box, and that's the philosophy of the middle school. And, and I think that's part for their development. So when, even if they feel boxed in, we're going to be able to hopefully catch the kids up when they get to high school. Otherwise you don't get it, your diploma. Some kids take five years, six years to get it. And those other kids, hey, we're, we're going to hopefully get out of your way because you're going to skyrocket to all the classes we can offer. So it, I know it's a small part, it's a three-year part of their world, but if they can get to the high school, we can, we can work with that.
Just to some, I mean, as part of your decision-making process, I think that would be great to go see it out in the middle school.
Doors are open, anytime.
Yeah.
And I think to offer, if you're interested in the DAPD, to kind of.
To show you the process, I think it's easier to see, for example, kids in our sub-separate program, like what steps they have taken, and it really focuses on the coherence piece, which is part of the shift in the standards, about what are the priority skills and how do they scaffold to build to their chronological grade level, so to speak. And I can tell you for the first time that I've been in this district, and I've been in this district for a long time, we have third grade students on both sides of town who are in the language-based classroom, who are going, rising into fourth grade with multiplication skills. And that hasn't happened before. And so there's excitement around that, and the teachers are very engaged in the process. And it's been great for me to see that initially it was me guiding, 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 and there, they've taken over. And they get it, and they understand not only the math, but the process to move kids at their appropriate pace to be successful and have that deep-rooted understanding. So just wanted to add that.
I just ask one more thing. Are we using this with special ed students? Is there a component of it?
So they'll be using the same materials in terms of, for our language-based classrooms in particular. We'll be using the same materials. And then our, like, like I said earlier, our inclusion teachers, our learning center teachers will be trained as well to be in the cla, in the inclusion setting, in the general ed setting, but also to do that reteach, preteach, in the academic support, so we can meet some, you know. We have students who have math goals, and other students who, you know, math is a challenge for them. We'll be able to do that on both, in both classroom settings.
And to your point about closing the gap, that's been a historical challenge here in Wilmington. They have not, the special education programs have not used the same materials as the general ed setting. So you're trying to close a gap. Now, all programs, all, whether it be language-based or sub-separate for moderate or severe disabilities, life skills, they're all using the same program.
Good, thank you. Do you have any more questions?
Yes.
I just have a question about the Algebra I. And maybe you said this and I missed it because there's been a lot of talk.
There's a lot going on today.
So in the new way, this is the current way. And then in the new way, the eighth grade is grade eight standards plus Algebra I?
So in.
Might be the next slide.
The next slide, yeah. Part of grade eight plus Algebra I.
Second, so Algebra I, you still are responsible for those graded, so the students are still assessed on those grade eight standards. So we've got to pick up that second half of Algebra, of grade eight Common Core. And then on top of that, do the Algebra, the 33 Algebra standards. A lot of those, as Mr. Manchester said earlier, are already spiraled in, so they're skills that the kids already had. So a lot of times, our Algebra teachers will kind of just integrate the grade eight standards. So it's not, all right, for the first three months, we're just going to teach grade eight standards. And then we're going to go to Algebra. They start off with Algebra, and they built in those eighth grade standards as they kind of go throughout the year where it makes sense for us.
So the previous slide said there were 66 Algebra I standards.
It's 66 and 30, 32 eighth grade standards. So, yeah, and, and there's, there is a lot of, a lot of overlap. I mean, where they're the same standard. So if we can, if the seventh grade, and this is where we have to help them just figure out, hey, what are the, what are the major standards that they need to cover at the end of seventh grade? There'll be some very small standards that, again, from my perspective, I want Algebra I covered top to bottom. That's my priority. Not their priority, it's my priority. But, and, and I'll live in, again, it's my priority to get that. But that's where we have to do a good job of figuring out, if we lose a standard, I'd rather lose just an eighth grade standard that is a small priority to have the Algebra I covered. But again, that's, and that's hopefully, because right now, they've been having, in seventh grade, having to do 55, 50, 60. Where I think we can get it down to, close to high 40s and still be pretty good.
Do you have any more questions? We'll take a vote. I'd just like to say before we do though, I'm sure that we're all feeling the same way. It's fascinating to have you come before us without notes, and to, you, you love this so much. See, I'm a humanities English person, so. I'm really impressed, and I think you show the quality as a group. You show the quality of the educators that we have in Wilmington, and that we're very grateful for. And the work that you're willing to put in, and I know some of you tonight had things with your children and gave that up to be here. And it's really means so much, and this is why Wilmington's such a great community, and why so many things are going on here, and we're willing to give it a try. If it doesn't work in a couple of years, we'll change it. But for now, we're going to give you the support, I'm pretty sure, that. I, I don't want to speak for it because we hadn't taken the vote yet, but I don't want to presume. But seriously, thank you very much for everything you do for us, and for Wilmington and for the children. It really shows that you care a lot. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to accept the middle school program of studies for the 2016-2017 school year. Mr. Bjork.
I'll offer that as a motion.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Bonish. Allo's in favor? Unanimous, unanimous, Kim. So now you can have school next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
While Lisa is setting up, I just want to hand out, let's see. For you, this, what I'm handing to you is the summary and recommendations from the Social Emotional Learning Subcommittee of the Behavioral Health Task Force. Our Behavioral Health Task Force broke up into different groups, and one of the groups was specifically tasked with investigating social emotional learning curriculum to be potentially implemented in Wilmington Public Schools. They engaged in a process not unlike, in some ways, the process that middle school folks went through for the selection of a math program. But here you can, is there, there are summary and recommendations. You can see that they considered and reviewed a number of different curriculum. Looks like about eight different curriculum. And they actually went and did some school visits. They sort of narrowed it down to open circle and responsive classroom as being the top, two of the top ones. And they visited schools to see it implemented in action. So this is, you see their recommendation is essentially, and the considerations is to implement responsive classroom. Our plan right now is to pilot it next year at the Early Childhood Centers. We've already arranged for professional development at the end of June for the Wildwood and the Beltwell staff. And some of our CARES staff are also interested in taking that as well. And so I asked Lisa to come, who just, because there aren't enough things on her resume, just so happens to also be a certified responsive classroom instructor and has probably the best handle, one of the best handles in the district. So I asked her to do a presentation on responsive classroom, so you're aware that this is what we're considering for piloting and then perhaps future implementation. It is a pre-K to eight program.
Good, thank you, welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. Be a fun, light one. And I could go on all day about responsive classroom because I just think it's such a worthwhile program to have in your schools. But I'm just going to kind of go with the, the highlights. Oh, it kind of goes off the screen. But what is responsive classroom? So as Subtently I said, it's a, a social emotional program that encompasses pre-K to grade eight. And it puts enough emphasis on not only the social emotional side of things, but also the academic side of things. And the basis is developing a strong school community. And you'll hear about how the program does that later on in the slides. It is a research-based program, an evidence-based program. And the group Castle, who's a national leader in social emotional learning for students, recommends responsive classroom for schools. So the responsive classroom principles is, social learning curriculum is just as important as an academic curriculum. And students learn best when they have choices. And strongest cognitive growth happens through social interactions. And it's important for teachers to know their students as well as almost their parents do, in order to connect to them and answer the hows and whys of student behavior. And without going through and reading every point on my PowerPoint, the principles of responsive classroom align to our district strategic plan around responsibility, inclusiveness, integrity, and responsibility, as well as our objective of having an inclusive environment and accessing equality for all students. Okay, so there are various parts of responsive classroom, and I'm going to kind of just give an overview of those pieces. And it starts with the first six weeks of school are the most important time in a student's life before their grade level. This is where they develop their social friendships and the connection with the teachers. And that also goes for parents as well. So they feel connected to the school and feel a part of the school community as well as the classroom community. And this is when routines are established and rules are created, and the goals of the school as well as the classroom. And in some districts also, on the bus, in the cafeteria, it becomes a, a community-building activity. One piece of responsive classroom is called Rules, Rules and Logical Consequences. And this is where the classroom rules are developed by the students with the teacher in the classroom. It's a very collaborative thing. And during this phase, it's important, the teacher frames things in a very positive way. So instead of rules like no hitting, no kicking, no biting, the teacher might say to the class, well, what are some things or some ways that we show that we can be positive to our, our friends? Or be nice to our friends, or be a good friend? And so then children right out of the gate generate, oh, well, I like it when my friend talks nicely to me. Okay, that's great. And they share thoughts and they develop the rules altogether. And in most of the responsive classrooms that I've worked with and worked in, the students then sign the bottom as almost like a, a class agreement that they have generated the rules, they're part of the rules. And then those rules are then somehow presented to parents as well. So there's that homeschool connection piece. Morning meeting is, has to be one of the best parts of the day. And I highly encourage, as it's implemented next year, that you take an opportunity to see morning meeting. So morning meeting starts, as it states, right at the beginning of the day. It can last anywhere between 20 minutes and a half an hour. And the students come in and have a space in their room, whether it be a rug. In the older classrooms, sometimes children get their chairs and they sit in a circle. And they start with a greeting. And sometimes a greeting starts off very basic. And during that time, you're teaching modeling of eye contact. What does your face look like when you say good morning to somebody? And you start with those basic social rules. But then it can bridge into, you bring in a different language. So I remember in my classroom, the students used to love when we would bring in different languages. So I know a little Italian, so, you know, I'd say, you can say ciao, or you can say buongiorno. And so they'd go around the room, and while they're greeting each other in various languages, you're looking for that eye contact, that smile, the tone, how you shake somebody's hand. And it's like modeling, modeling, modeling. And when, let's say it's not happening in an appropriate way, the teacher has the common language that's used throughout the school to say, oh, can you remind me, what is the appropriate way that we say good morning to somebody? And so it's not punitive, so you're talking more about the, the task and not the doer. Like you, you're not greeting him correctly, that language changes. And it's just a positive experience for the students in the class. Then there's another activity you could do during the greeting that's more interactive, where you would take a ball of yarn, it's called a spider web greeting. Take a ball of yarn, and you have a person who starts, and they hold their end of the yarn, and they'll say, oh, good morning, Chairperson Kane. And they roll the ball of yarn, and then you'd say back, good morning, Mrs. Zepolito. And then you hold your piece of yarn, and then you would roll it to somebody else. And you kind of guide the class, oh, we're going to roll to somebody different today. Or girls are going to roll to boys today, and boys are going to roll to girls today. And so at the end, you end up creating this spider web. And what's so powerful about it is now they've extended this greeting, and the class is, feels all warm. And you say, okay, we're going to count off, all the odds, stand up and hold your string. And so all the students who are odd numbers, they stand up. And now the spider web that was pretty much, you know, one-dimensional is now three-dimensional. And you say, what do you see? And some kids will say, oh, I see triangles, I see lots of triangles, I see, and I saw this triangle. And it starts developing into this whole other conversation while holding and maintaining that connection and community in the class. And, so that's just an example of another greeting. There's thousands. There's actually books now. When I first was trained in this program, it was one binder. It was a really new program. It was one binder, and there was a handful of greetings. Now there's a whole book on just greetings. But it's just a great way to make those connections in the classroom between the students. And maybe students they wouldn't typically, you know, talk to, or they haven't been on their soccer team, so they don't know them as well. Another part of the morning meeting is an activator. It's like a small game, and it can be academically related. So there's a game called Zoom. And, and this is more, of course, I'm in the third grade kind of frame of mind right now, sorry. But the game Zoom, like we're doing multiplication facts. And we say, okay, in the game of Zoom, we're going to be counting by threes. And so the first person starts as three, and the next person says six, and the next person says nine. And then you go around, and you say, okay, now we're going to change it. We're going to count by ones, but we're still doing the three tables. So the person who has a factor of three says Zoom. And if they don't, it's like, oh, that's funny, you didn't, and it becomes like this fun, interactive game. But you're squeezing in the academics at the same time, and it's just a enjoyable experience. And then there's like a physical, like, kind of like a physical education activity you could do, it's called Busy Bee. And so the kids stand up, and so you're getting their, some of their energy out in the morning too, and you say, okay. And the way it goes is basically, shoulder to shoulder, and kids go shoulder to shoulder each other. Okay, knee to knee, and they go knee to knee. And then you say Busy Bee, and then they have to find somebody else and go knee to knee with that person. And it's just like laughter and fun and building connections. So again, like morning meeting is just a time where you're really building that sense of community with the students in the class. And then typically a final phase of morning meeting is the morning letter, where it talks about the day. Today we have Jim, you know, Manny is the line leader. At the bottom, it can have like an interactive piece where you say, something simple is, are you buying hot lunch? And they write yes or no, or they put like a post-it. And then you say to somebody, who can tally this for us? So you're bringing those social and academic pieces together. Another piece is guided discovery. And this is typically mostly done in the first six weeks of school. And it's fostering children's interest in new learning experiences, from materials to the centers you have in your room. And so you're building the expectation right out of the gate of things and objects and manipulatives in your classroom. And so you might bring the kids over to your math center and say, today we're using fraction strips. This is the appropriate way we use fraction strips. These are tools, they're not toys. And say to kids, well, how else do you think you could use the fraction strips? And then the students are engaged, and they're explaining, and you're maybe saying, oh, that's not exactly how we use a fraction strip. Or, oh, that's a great idea, I never thought of using a fraction strip that way. But you're building in the expectation with students on the different pieces of your, your classroom. So nothing in your room is a mystery to them. It becomes their home away from home. It's their community within your classroom. Just one more example on guided discovery that used to make me giggle during the training when they talked about a glue stick. And so they gave us all glue sticks, and said, we're going to do a guided discovery on a glue stick. It's like, what, what can you do with a glue stick? And then you really think about it, and think about how kids use a glue stick. And some students have never been taught the appropriate way. So you give them a piece of paper, and then put a glue stick all over a piece of paper, and then they're gluing it to something. Whereas if you did a guided discovery and say, okay, boys and girls, you take the cap off the glue stick. You put only this much of the glue stick up, and you put a line here, a line here, a line here, and a line here. And does it still stick? It still sticks. So then you've actually given them the opportunity to be successful in, in using the tools of your classroom. And it really just all came together and made sense. And honestly, in the classroom, you would, you wouldn't find that you were sending, well, in those days, you would send notes home to parents and say, hey, we need some more glue sticks. And it felt like every week you were saying, we need some more glue sticks, we need some more glue sticks. And then we found, you know, it'd be like a month or two in, and we're just now needing some glue sticks because of the appropriate use of the tool. So that's another piece of guided discovery. Parenting, Communication and Strategies. So typically at the beginning of the year, you know, we already in Wilmington Public Schools do the welcoming before, the day before school starts, where parents can come in with their students. in with their students, and then we have the open houses, but responsive classroom lends itself to making more, even more of an open door policy, where you send home a newsletter about your morning meeting and what you're doing during morning meeting. And sometimes we would have parents who say, "Oh, I'd like to come in for morning meeting, and I have this expertise I'd like to share." And so it creates that sense of community that isn't just housed inside of the school building, but it extends within the community. And it really brings parents to the forefront where they are able to talk about their student as their child, and lets the teacher see a different side that maybe they don't know about the student, and maybe why they do certain things, or behave in certain ways that is maybe not an expectation of the classroom, but it really brings that understanding. So what we, another component that is responsive classroom, but it's a book written by a gentleman named Chip Wood, and Mary has the book over there, it's called Yards Sticks, and so it really gets at the developmental pieces of children, both on an academic level, a social level, and emotional level. So what we found was that when we had a student who had a behavior, we didn't automatically say, like, "What is that behavior? No one else is doing it." We actually did developmental, what we called child studies, on students and said, "You know what, actually, it is slightly immature, it's more developmentally appropriate for a six-year-old, and this child happens to be seven, but it's in the range of developmental growth of children." And it really gave us a different perspective of how to approach students and support parents, and parents to support teachers in schools. But that, that book literally became our bible, it was, you know, tagged, and we really, at like, for example, at third grade level, we really understood the developmental nature of eight and nine-year-olds. It made a difference in your instruction, and it made a difference in your communication with families, and it made a difference in instructional choices that you made through the day. So, and parents obviously have a huge piece with that. And we actually photocopied the pages for, out of that book for the age of our students and gave it to parents, and lots of parents said, "That was really an interesting read. Can I have the grade, you know, the age before and the age after? Absolutely, anything you can shed light on to support us at schools, happy to do it." So it became like really inclusive and together part of our school day. Let's see. So responsive classroom increases social skills and academic engagement, establishes positive classroom climate and school climate, should say, also say school climate as well, increases learners' investment and independence, and increases students' positive behaviors. Other things that school, as a school, you'll have like a quiet symbol, so we used, this is our quiet symbol, and we use it in some buildings here in Wilmington now, and literally you don't use your voice at all, like you have an understanding with the students that when they see this, and sometimes a little extra reminder like this, that it means that we're not talking right now, and the great thing that you see is like students own it, and they'll turn to their friend who's talking to them, and even though they love their friend and they want to continue the conversation, they literally look at them and go like this. And we would quiet an entire cafeteria of eight classes in literally two minutes by just going like this, and that's so much better, just the feeling of the cafeteria, it's not, "Why didn't you quiet down?" You know, it's all loud voices trying to project over other loud voices, it's a very calming, deliberate effect, and you have those different signals and terminology that you use with students that is just engaging and empowering for everybody and not off-putting and stifling, so to speak. So the district has also been talking about PBIS, and so I just wanted to make the connection that they're not two different entities, they're the same. Responsive classroom and PBIS basically align with each other, as you can see here. So PBIS, you know, their features say, you know, common purpose and approach the discipline throughout the school, well, that's the hallmark of responsive classroom, that you establish school and district-wide discipline policy that staff and parents support. Everybody knows that this is the quiet signal, right? So let's say, for example, at CCD, we extend into the community, and they realize that this is the quiet symbol they use at Wilmington Public Schools, well, this is the quiet symbol that we're using at CCD, and so it becomes like all-encompassing. Staff use consistent methods for teaching rules and responding to behaviors. PBIS talks about student norms. Responsive classroom basically sets the framework to have three to five positively stated rules in each classroom and for the whole school, and it builds student investments, because it's come from them. It's not kind of like a very directed thing. PBIS talks about consistent procedures for teaching students' expectations, and responsive classroom uses positive teacher language. Lots, I didn't really talk about this too much, but there's lots of role-playing that goes on, like you have conversations with students, like, "What would this look like? What would happen if someone was talking in line? What would we say?" You let them role-play the role of the teacher and the student, and it's amazing what they come up with, more than you could possibly have planned in a lesson plan. And so we really talk about, hmm, what does it look like and what does it sound like? There's a phrase that you use, it's "I see you, I see everything." And I can remember one year, one of the classes that I had, and they, I heard someone whisper, and they said, "I think she really does have eyes in the back of her head," because that would be our statement, and what that does is it brings a sense of positivity to the class, like, "I see you, I know what's going on, you are safe in this environment." PBIS talks about a continuum of procedures for encouraging expected behaviors. So you use your morning meeting, the rule creation with students to encourage those expected behaviors, use collaborative problem-solving strategies such as a class meeting. So if things are, you feel in your class are not falling in line with the expectations and rules that you've set, you call a class meeting, and you have your company, you talk about it. And it's just such a great experience, because then you can really get the perspective of the students in your class, and maybe you're interpreting it one way, and really what they're saying is something completely different. And use written agreements for students who need additional support, so I'll type it there. And it isn't, I didn't find that very often we needed that, but sometimes you do, and that's not a punitive thing, it's just for some students, they just do better with that little certificate with the, maybe you're giving them the little sticker to encourage that positive behavior, but you're also, it's giving you an opportunity to make them a role model in that positive behavior as well. And then ongoing evaluation for effectiveness of what's happening, and so there's lots of observation about the students, the teacher's feedback, you hear quickly from parents, they see changes in their students at home, and you go back and you revisit strategies as you need them. So maybe you did the glue stick guided discovery, and now it's February, and everything's gone, they're coloring the page again with the glue stick. It's okay, you go back and you teach those expected behaviors, and you, maybe this is a point where you have modeling, you have someone in your class, you're that child who has that issue sometimes with behaviors, but you know they're great with that glue stick, and you have them come and model in the classroom.
Just to make further connection to, I think PBIS I view as being the framework that we're using for how we address and support students, and I see responsive classroom essentially as the curriculum, if you will, and the instructional strategies that one would utilize to ensure that we have a strong positive behavioral support framework for students.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Ms. Matt?
I'm just curious, I'd be interested in hearing how it looks like in the seventh, eighth grade realm, as well as what do we offer our high schoolers, who may be at different plateaus of development, and it's, I mean, and I take that, say that in a general word per se, but I think they also have, you know, have social impacts that even continue throughout the high school years, and I'd be interested in the whys and ifs and...
Right, and it's sort of in a way reminds me of math, you have that consistency of program, and it doesn't just end in the building, because it's a pre-K, K building, it extends, and the interesting thing about responsive classroom is originally, in its inception, they did not have a middle school program, and that ironic, and now they do. So, you know, the...
So what is it?
The character that you tried to build within them through the responsive classroom, you were hoping that that's not fleeting, it stays with them, and, you know...
Right, but since this is going up and through the eighth grade, which is, you know, a great source of turmoil with adolescents, and I just was kind of wondering what that, you spoke of the elementary, which I can absolutely identify.
Yeah.
I just, I'm just trying to visualize what it looks like for the...
Ms. Dorad, do you want to sit down?
And so I think for us, we're gonna start our work, and our efforts are on PBIS, because for us, I think, in terms of school culture, student norms, that is the most logical place to start as kind of a foundational piece. And then from there, we'll work on some of those more intervention pieces as we kind of move along, but what our work next year in very small bits and pieces as we move along throughout the year is on PBIS, so that's where we're gonna spend most of our effort next year.
As you progress to the middle school, obviously developmentally, it's not really about how to use a glue stick anymore, right? But it's more, I think, focused on conflict resolution. There's a, there's a lot of stuff that happens at the middle school, and to give kids the vocabulary, first and foremost, just to identify how they're feeling and articulate how they're feeling in the vocabulary around that, but then to also, how do you deal with a conflict? What are the positive ways that you can, and proactive ways that you can deal with stress and conflict?
Right.
And I think by the time they get to the high school, there isn't an SEL curriculum so much, but the HELF curriculum addresses and targets those key competencies in particularly the social domain, because the emotional at that point, hopefully you've given them the language to be able to address and express emotionally, but socially how they interact with each other, so maybe you don't have the, what did she call it? The prama? The prom drum?
No prom, and I think for us, looking on those resilience pieces, so how, how do students take on challenges and kind of overcome when they're not feeling at their best? So that, for us, it's gonna be how to handle conflict and how to be resilient. So, and what that looks like, I can't tell you right now, but in terms of instruction as it relates to RTI.
I was just thinking that with anxiety and with long behavioral health issues that you've been targeting, is that that anxiety and that stress extends through to the high school, and I can see some of this thought process being, evolving to where that can offer additional support for our students.
Right.
At that rate, and I was just wondering if we could pull from...
Yeah, the premise is that where we don't really address the social-emotional domain comprehensively and in great depth at K to A currently, that as we do that and do that strategically and holistically, that by the time they enter high school, they will have those coping skills and those resilient skills, and it's not to say that instruction in that area stops, but it's just very different. It doesn't have to be as explicit, because you've given them the foundational skills so that they can survive that and thrive in that transition to the high school environment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I just have a comment.
I think our teachers do a very good job, elementary teachers do a very good job with that. I've been in, you know, many classrooms, and they have morning time, and they share and reading time over the years, so, but I think it's great that it's going up to the middle school. It's adding, it's just a little extra help to make sure these kids are on the right path, you know? So it's good, great, thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service as well. And then in there.
Okay, and our final item of new business is special education department destruction of materials.
And this, this is more of a surplus materials being disposed of, and the vote of the committee, since taxpayer resources were used to fund the original purchase, that these things need to be destroyed or disposed of as surplus, that that should require an affirmative vote of the school committee to do so.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the destruction of the outdated test kits and materials. Mrs. Carroll, second, Mr. Moulis, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right, our next item of business is public comment. No public comment tonight, thank you. Is anyone behind me? No? Okay. Sorry, thank you. Other reports? Do we have any other reports? I'll just make one other report quickly. The jazz concert last night was unbelievable, it's unbelievable, yes. So I'm not sure if they, was it taped? Thank you, oh, WCTV, it will be on WCTV, that's fabulous. If you get a chance to watch it, you will not believe how talented our children are. And I know it also goes back to what fantastic teachers they have. We have such a strong department there, yeah, it's really wonderful. And because the new theater is so different, it holds about 200 more people than we had at the middle school and that we had in the other high school, but it doesn't look as crowded. The seats were all filled, and there were hundreds of people there, but it, it feels like it's not closing in at you, it's really, if you get a chance, it's worth it. And, oh, between now and then too, town meeting before we meet again.
April 27th is our next meeting, and the town meeting will be that Saturday.
Town meeting will be after that, okay, so we'll talk about that later. Correspondence? No, no correspondence. Future meeting dates and agenda items, April 27th will be the, before town meeting, so this hasn't happened in a long time, so we'll be doing a change in officers on April 27th at that particular meeting. And May 11th will be our next meeting after that. Mrs. Carroll? Yes. I'm gonna handle this. And I am gonna, thank you, call the meeting to an end, to an adjournment.
At the end. I got so excited, I forgot what I was doing. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
MJ?
So moved.
No, second.
Second. Jenny? All in favor?
Good night, good luck.
Thank you, everyone.